Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be delivered by Dr. Paul Kerbos. He's the pastor at Westminster Presbyterian Church. Welcome Pastor, it's good to have you. And when he's completed that, we'll ask Councilwoman Sawyer if she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand at this time?
Let us pray. God of grace and God of glory, as we approach the Labor Day weekend, we want to pause to give you thanks for all the people who labor together to make our community the wonderful place that it is. The sharing of diverse talents and abilities and the willingness to take on all the varied roles, from offices to schools, from factories to stores, from farms to restaurants, and in so many other ways, this community works together for the benefit of the whole, and for that we give you our thanks. And we especially thank you for the servants of public safety, such as our police and our fire personnel, and for all those who take on the public service of government, such as this city council. We pray that you will guide this council in its work today, that you'll give them wisdom in their decisions and kindness in their decision-making, and make their labor today pleasing to you. And as we pray for our own community, we also pause to offer our concern and prayers for our neighbors in East Texas. We pray that you will build them the ark of your care even as those waters rage. We pray all of these things in your name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Claire and Ashley, you all want to come up and we can talk about a new program we've got, and I think Doug, yeah Doug, come on up here as well. We are reaching the end of the time when a lot of people in Oklahoma City spend time outdoors, but we all know and we are reminded by a lot of public service announcements about the importance of putting sunscreen on when we go outside. We see melanoma and we see other risks that the sun can cause, and so we have started a new program that our Parks Department will be implementing to allow free sunscreen to be available to our citizens when they are out exercising at certain locations. And if it's a successful program to start with, we'll no doubt expand it. But Doug, why don't I give you the microphone, let you expand it, and somewhere along the line, it got a name, and so, of course, you know, everything has to be branded with a title, and so this can no longer be just put sunscreen on when you go out, but so we have a name for it. Doug?
Well, I'll let the ladies to my left explain what the naming and the marketing, but we're just so excited that they came forward. The Cancer Institute came to us and suggested this opportunity. We are going to put dispensers at all the golf courses so that golfers can be reminded on a regular basis as they check in at the clubhouse. We're going to have them at as many of our interactive fountains, so parents will have them for the children, so it'll cut down on their cost, but they'll be able to stay longer and play longer in our fountains. But we're so excited about this opportunity, and I'd like to hand off the mic to you all.
So we're officially calling this initiative a Sun Smart City Initiative, in our hope to declare Oklahoma as one of the sun smartest cities. And doing that, we're going to be installing 15, for now, free-to-the-public sunscreen dispensers that will be equipped with broad-spectrum sunscreen with sun protection factor of at least 30 SPF to hopefully encourage Oklahomans to utilize these devices and help prevent the 1 in 5 statistic of Oklahomans being diagnosed with skin cancer.
Well, on behalf of the Stevenson Cancer Center, our mission is to reduce the burden of cancer for the whole state of Oklahoma, including our community, so we're just very, very excited and pleased to be able to work with the city and our wonderful parks to install these sunscreen dispensers and hopefully make Oklahoma a little bit safer.
Sun Smart City Initiative. All right, great. Thank you all for your work for fighting cancer. Doug, thanks for the implementation of this program. All right, now, we have a group of seniors who have come to see us today. The names I have, Delinda Smith, Barbara Johnson, Billy Beal, Ralph Beal, Maxie Vick, Helgavick, Bonnie Menzel, and John Menzel. Y'all come up here and stand forward. It is Senior Center Month in the state of Oklahoma, and we are investing broadly in these types of constructions and activities and programming, and we have city staff, our Parks Department, working to provide a broad array of services and opportunities for people to interact and get healthy. So let's ask the clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society who invest their wisdom and experience to enrich the lives of younger generations. The city of Oklahoma City operates the Woodson Park Senior Activity Center located at 3401 South May Avenue, and the Will Rogers Senior Activity Center located at 3501 Pat Murphy Drive. Whereas through an array of services, programs, and activities, Oklahoma City senior centers empower older citizens to contribute to the health and well-being of themselves and others. Whereas Oklahoma City senior centers help to mobilize the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of older residents. Whereas Oklahoma City senior centers affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Whereas the National Council on Aging recognizes September as National Senior Center Month, and has established senior centers master in aging as this year's thing. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as Senior Center Month in Oklahoma City, and he calls upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions and efforts of senior center participants, staff, and volunteers who work together every day to enhance the well-being of older citizens in our community.
Let's show our appreciation to Senior Center Month. Doug, what do you want to explain?
Well, I just want to point out that the city has operated two senior centers for a long, long time, at Will Rogers Park and at Woodson Park, and the staff and some of them are represented here as well as participants in the program. We do a dynamic job in those facilities, and I'm really proud of the new programs that have come online over the last three years, and we couldn't do it without these folks. But I also want to point out that the mayor just got a letter this week from a participant in one of our newest senior centers, the MAPS 3 Health and Wellness Facility out on Rockwell, and I really would like to read a few excerpts if I may, Your Honor. This is from a gentleman. "I am 67 years old, I live alone and work at home. There have been many days when I did not leave my house or talk to any other human being. I've been living alone for a long time and have come to prefer that lifestyle. But that all changed on April 14th, when I made the radical decision to join the new Health and Wellness Center on North Rockwell. I went to my first Tai Chi class three days later. What a great experience that was. We have an excellent young instructor who is very patient with us old geezers and geezettes." His words, not mine. "I'm sure we must look ridiculous for the first few weeks. On May 3rd, I attended my first chair yoga class. Again, the respectful of us old geezers not being able to get down on the floor. I started traditional yoga in August. I could go on about this class, but let it be said that I am now participating in three separate yoga classes. I'm going to the Wellness Center six days a week now. My strength is stronger, I'm more flexible, I have better balance, and I feel better than I have in years. With the opening of this Wellness Center in the city of Oklahoma City has made a brilliant investment to our community. The returns on that investment may not be easy to measure, but they are very real. I want to thank Oklahoma City for providing this life-changing opportunity." So again, September is Senior Center Month. Visit our centers at Will Rogers, at Woodson, or our newest facility out on Rockwell. Thank you, Mayor.
Each month, the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City help us recognize a Teacher of the Month, and this morning, we are recognizing Madison Wingate of Pierce Elementary. Madison, come on up. Let's show our appreciation to Madison. What's 29th and South Portland?
Yeah, Tulsa. Yeah.
And Madison teaches pre-K. So if you want to find someone with some patience, here's Madison. She was telling me also that she's got, you know, a handful of students who are reading by the time that pre-K lets out, and that's, these are four-year-olds, so that's quite an accomplishment. And obviously, you have kids developing at different levels, so give some advice out there. If they've got a young person in their life, how do you, how do you gauge their readiness to be able to take on new tasks?
They basically, they'll tell you, they'll show you. You know, I mean, if they're kind of dragging their feet on something, they need more support and more time, but, you know, I'll have students that they'll open up a book and they'll say, "Here's Ann, here's Big," and they're pointing out all the sight words. They're like, "This is what's happening in this picture," and then it's like, "Well, okay then, we're ready to read," you know? I mean, they really kind of tell you through their actions and their interests, and then if it's not there, you know, you just keep being patient and loving them and telling them they can do it, and then they'll get there.
We have a resolution that acknowledges you as our Teacher of the Month. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Madison Wingate has been named Teacher of the Month for August 2017 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Madison graduated with honors from Texas Tech University and has been teaching since August 2013, all as a pre-K teacher at Pierce Elementary School. Whereas Madison participates on the PBIS, the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Committee, whose purpose is to implement a proactive approach to establishing the behavioral supports and social culture needed for all students to achieve social, emotional, and academic success. She is also trained teachers for the PBIS Committee. Whereas Madison strives for her classroom to be the place where students are safe enough to find their voice, take risk, and be themselves. Madison is so passionate about teaching that she started a Facebook group in 2016 called Parents and Teachers of Oklahoma City Unite to facilitate communication and bridge the divide that seems to exist between parents and teachers in the community. Madison credits her teaching career to her family legacy. In every generation on her mother's side, there are several teachers, and she was inspired by their stories and dedication to become teachers. Whereas Madison also attributes her first-grade teacher for influencing her decision to teach due to the love and support she was shown as a young student. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Madison Wingate on her selection as the August 2017 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
And now the suspense to see if the council will approve this resolution. Is there a motion? And a second. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Let's show our appreciation. I'll look for a motion on the appointments. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 4 is a Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to receive the journal for August 15th. For B is to approve the journal for August 1st. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a few this morning, starting on page 17, under item 7, B.C. 10, we ask that that be stricken on page 17, 7, B.C. 10. Moving to page 24, under item 9, H. 1, A, 4806 North Blackwelder, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item B, 6600 Braniff Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H, 1423 Northwest 31st, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item I, 1531, uh, 1513 Northwest 47th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Under 9, I. 1, A, 4806 North Blackwelder, we ask that that be stricken. Owner secured. Item B, 6600 Braniff, we ask that that be stricken. Owner secured. Item I, 1423 Northwest 31st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And finally, item J, 1513 Northwest 47th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll move on to revocable permits. Item 6A is a permit request from the St. Jude's Research Hospital to hold the 2017 St. Jude Walk and Run to End Childhood Cancer. Is there anyone here representing that organization that would like a chance to promote the event? Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Emily Drover at 400 North Walker, Suite 170, Oklahoma City, 73102.
Okay, well, tell us about the St. Jude's Walk Run.
This is a family-friendly 5K. It's on Saturday, September 23rd, and all of the proceeds will go towards St. Jude Children's Research Hospital.
Wonderful. How can people sign up if they'd like to?
They can go to stjude.org/walkrun.
All right. Thanks for all your work on this. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item 6B is a request to hold the AIDS Walk of Oklahoma City and a 5K Red Run, and my notes say Verna Meadows might be here to tell us more about it. Good morning, Verna.
My name is Verna Meadows, and my address is 4125 Southeast 26th in Dell City, and I am so excited that we're going to start our 19th year this year. This is the 19th year for AIDS Walk, and in those 19 years, we've raised, closing in on $700,000 in grants that we've given to the nonprofits that help those with HIV and AIDS in Oklahoma City.
Well, thank you so much.
And we've moved it to the farmer's market area this year. I'm going to use the trails, and we've added a 10K run as well.
Okay. So it's going to be on September 10th?
Yes, sir.
In the farmer's market area of downtown? That's in Ward 6. Meg, you want to make a motion?
Absolutely.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you're doing. All right, item 6C is a request with Friends of Multi-Sport, Inc. They're going to hold the Red Man Triathlon September 16th. Is anybody here representing the Red Man? All right, how about a motion? This is conducted in Ward 1 and Ward 8. James, you want to make a motion? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 6D is a request with Friends of the Mansion to hold the September Fest Event Northeast 23rd Street between North Kelly and North Lincoln. Is there anyone here representing this event? All right, it's in Ward 7, John. All right, cast your votes on item 6D, and it passed unanimously. Item 6E is a permit request from Integris Jim Thorpe Rehabilitation Center to hold the Jim Thorpe Courage Run. And looks like we have two people coming up. Are you Susan?
I'm Susan.
Okay, we'll need both of your names and addresses, please.
1225 Southwest 133rd Place, Oklahoma City.
I'm Greg Hornaber, 11763 Block 3 Circle, G3 Oklahoma.
All right, tell us about the Jim Thorpe Courage Run.
This is our 12th annual Jim Thorpe Courage Run, and we have a one-mile and a 5K course. We'll be hosting it this year down on Lincoln Boulevard, starting out of the Oklahoma Sports Hall of Fame parking lot, and then heading south on Lincoln, around the Capitol, and back up, finishing towards Oklahoma.
All right, and if people want to sign up, what should they do?
They can go to Integris Jim Thorpe Rehab or Sign Me Up Sports.
Okay, it's in Ward 7, John. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 6F is a request in the Mesa Park neighborhood to hold the Mesa Festa. This will be on Northwest 18th Street between Chartel and Northerly Avenue. Is anyone here representing this event? Meg, something tells me you know something about it.
I do. It's a fabulous event, lots of ice cream and fried chicken.
All right, can't beat ice cream and fried chicken. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 6F. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 6G is a request from the Plaza District to hold the Plaza District Festival September 30th, and this is, of course, is in the Plaza District. Is there anyone here representing the Plaza District this morning? Come on up.
Kayla Lewis, 1125 North McKinley, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73106.
All right, tell us about the Plaza District Festival.
We are on our 19th year of the festival. It'll be September 30th from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We're starting an hour early this year. We've already released our band lineup. There'll be three stages this year, which is also new, and we're expecting around 20,000 people. We do close off 16th Street, and it should be a great event.
Wonderful. And Meg, it's in Ward 6.
It is, and you promised beautiful weather this year, so it's...
I promise, yes.
It's going to be awesome. I move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck. All right, we'll recess the council meeting. Convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have a motion and a second. Looks like there are six items on the MFA. Any comments or questions before we vote? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Two items. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are three items. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
Yes, item number 7, B. 3, I asked Doug to give a brief presentation on the highlights of the Martin Nature Park.
Okay, which item is that marked?
Uh, 7, B. 3.
And Mayor, if I could mention AZ.
Which one?
Yeah, I'm AZ.
AZ, okay.
Now, I'd like to mention N.
Okay, Mark, jump in.
Do you want to give us a brief presentation, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Stone Seifer, Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation. Most of the people that have frequented, are nature lovers that frequent Martin Park, know that our facility has been closed for almost a year now. We have completely renovated the building. We have moved the front door facing the parking lot, so it has more of a welcoming element to it. We have added more windows to it so that you can actually view out into the nature that you came out to visit by going to Martin Park Nature, and we're in the process of creating new exhibits inside the building, but it's a phenomenal facility now. It was a great facility before, but this is even, it's going to be even more exceptional going forward, and we're excited about the fact that the city council supported it. The citizens voted for it in the 2007 bond program, so again, we're real excited about the reopening of the Martin Park Nature Center.
The one thing I'd say, it is much more user-friendly. It's always been a beautiful facility, but it, and we're no longer in the temporary parking lot. Everything's open, so I'd encourage everyone to go out and see the new park.
Thank you.
And it's free. All right, Doug, thank you. Meg, item AZ.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to thank the Arts Council and let everyone know that we're entering into our 16th year in a partnership. Our Parks and Recreation Department, Doug, you've been on stage a lot today. I won't call you back up, but this is another partnership with our Parks and Recreation Department and the Arts Council of Oklahoma City partnering to participate in Art in the Parks. And this will continue this all the way through next summer, through June of 18, but it's been a great partnership and provides a lot of opportunity for arts education that we all know in our public schools is diminishing, and so it's a great partnership with the Parks Department, and I want to thank all involved.
All right, thank you. James?
Yeah, item N is a road widening project just north of Reno on Sarah Road, and it says Ward 3, but it probably should say Ward 1 and Ward 3 because that's right on the border. But I've gotten a few questions about this because about nine months ago, we repaved all of Sarah and then just stopped at kind of a random-looking place, but that was because of this project was going to come in and widen it, so we didn't want to repave the two lanes. So I've been explaining that to people that have called and asked why we stopped where we stopped. So this is the fulfillment of that whole mile stretch there on Sarah. It's, the memo says it's going to begin in November and be completed in March, so I just wanted to point that out to people who work and live in that area.
All right, thanks, James. Any other comments on the consent docket? All right, we're ready to vote. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Onto the concurrence docket.
Move those items subject to individual consideration.
All right, any individual considerations on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That brings us to item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is 9A1. It's an ABC issue in Ward 3 at 2916 Southwest 59th Street. It's in Ward 3, Larry.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
This was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 9A1? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A2 is an ABC issue in Ward 6 at 3710 South May. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an application that, where there were no protests, it was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, and I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on 9A2? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A3 is an ABC issue in Ward 8. The address is 3,000 West Memorial Road, Suite 103. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It's here today without any protest. It was approved by the Planning Commission on July the 13th. I'd move for its approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A4 is an ABC issue in Ward 8.
Thank you, Your Honor, again, ordinance on...
Is this a different issue? It's the same address? Oh, it's a different suite number?
Different restaurants.
Okay.
It's here on final hearing for an ABC2 application. There were no protests. It was approved by the Planning Commission on July 13th, so I'd move for its approval, please.
All right, cast your votes on 9A4. It passed unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 645 Northeast 63rd Street. It's currently R1 Single Family, and it would become an O1 Limited Office District if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did approve this item. There were two protests, and I'm going to allow, at this time, the applicant to explain the resolution for us to protest.
Good morning, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Councilman's correct, there were some protests at the early onset of this case. If you look at the map in front of you, my client's actually buying a total of 10 acres, so they're also buying the land on the other side of the creek right there. And when we sat down to meet with the neighbors, the neighbors... And when we sat down to meet with the neighbors, the neighbors were okay with my client, they were okay with the use. Their only concern was how do we ensure that all the trees that are there are preserved? As you know, you can't condition approval of a zoning case like this. You can only condition approval of PUDs or SPUDs. And so what we decided to do was, we'll come back with a PUD after we get the O1 approved. The reason we couldn't just withdraw the O1 and move forward with the PUD is the people that own this land would not grant my client the necessary extension of time. And so we worked extensively with Dr. Cooper and Janice Powers, the Planning Commission, as well as the neighbors, so that they had some comfort that this O1 application is just a bridge gap to allow us to move forward, close on the property. You will see this case again in October, except it will be a PUD that encompasses the entirety of the site that puts in those requirements for tree preservation. So with that, we actually had the neighbors come to Planning Commission and support this application. Last Thursday, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the PUD, and there is no protest. So it's kind of a strange one, but it warranted some discussion, so we now have the neighbor's support, and we'd like to move forward.
All right, thank you, and thank you for working with the protestors. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments on Item 9A5? All right, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9A6 is also a Ward 7 zoning case at 201 Northwest 96th Street. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become an I2 moderate industrial district if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did approve this. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on 9A6. Any other comments or questions on this item? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 7. This item was deferred from August 1st. The address is 12300 North Coltrane Road. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would be put into a new PUD if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did approve it, the staff did recommend it, recommend for approval with the TEs. I see the applicant is President. Have y'all agreed to the TEs? The applicant has agreed to the TEs. With that said, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on Item 9A7. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. What, Michael? Michael, if you want to speak on 9A7, come to the microphone.
Okay, now, what is 9A7? I got a little late. First of all, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Okay, undeveloped, I don't know, undeveloped, I didn't get a chance really. Oh, my God, I'm a little upset about this. Undeveloped. Mr. John Pettis? Undeveloped. So what are we talking about? Turn this place down on Coltrane Road? What are we talking about here? I don't, I'm sorry?
You're welcome to speak to the developer if you'd like more details.
Yeah, well, I like more details. I like speaking to developers.
All right, well...
Will they be here today?
I'm sure you can find them.
Will they be here today?
I have no idea if they're here or not.
Developers for this northeast side, I guess not.
All right.
All right, then I'll just wait now, wait till someone come up. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. All right, Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 11301 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it'd be put into a new SPOUD if approved. Ed? No. All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9A8, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A9 is a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 13236 Northeastern Avenue. It's in a SPOUD, and we'd put into a new SPOUD if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did approve this. With that being said, I move for approval.
All right, come on up, Michael.
This man here, this city councilman, is all...
Michael, you gotta speak to this issue. You can't make personal attacks.
I'm speaking to the issue. I'm showing what he's controlling, procrastinating, conspiring to destroy developments in the northeast side of Oklahoma City.
Michael, you gotta stick to this issue.
All right, I'll wait on that offer, somebody come up.
All right. Cast your votes on Item 9A9, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A10 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 12400 Southwest 15th Street. It's in Ward 3, and it's currently AA, and it would become a new SPOUD if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak?
Yes.
We have one person that has signed up to speak, Terry, is it Matum? Okay, David?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is a SPOUD application to allow for the bus maintenance facility for Mustang Schools. In visiting with Councilman McAteer, one of the concerns he raised was Southwest 15th. In talking to the engineers, it is believed that the primary point of access for ingress and egress for the buses will be out on the check hall. There is an existing stub that comes from check hall and connects to the eastern side of our property. This is, this is the site that we're zoning, and you can see this street right here will connect to that. So it's believed that the main point of access for the buses will be on the check hall. We did have to modify some TEs at the Planning Commission, requiring some fencing. There is a pretty significant natural tree buffer on that south side of this property that will remain, and so with that, there were no protestors at the Planning Commission. We're happy to work with Public Works as we move forward with building permit and see what additional issues might be necessary for street improvements, if that is something that would help.
Okay, what we're, the reason that there's some questions here, and I beg your forgiveness, most of you have schools going in around, and there seems to be a common occurrence with schools. When schools come around, traffic builds up, and patrons get rather short-tempered, if you will, and want to know why we couldn't do things in a little more expeditious manner to facilitate ingress and egress. This particular intersection already has a vo-tech, a career tech facility on the property, correct?
I believe, at the, yeah, the southwest corner.
The corner of check hall and Southwest 15th. It has an elementary school on Southwest 15th to the east of check hall, which has raised a number of concerns to the point that there have been meetings in the past trying to figure out how to resolve the issue. There's another school going in, in that area, is there not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, which will add more traffic. So my concern was, it sounds very innocent, a bus maintenance facility, until you realize what really that might matter. That's a parking lot for a bunch of school buses during the evening hours while they're not needed. And so the moving of all those buses around, it's not just one or two vehicles back there that are getting maintained. A large number in the fleet are also gonna be parked there, are they not?
Yes, sir. And it's our hope, if you think about school times, that we believe that the buses will exit the facility before the morning rush, and will be back to the facility after the morning rush. And likewise, in the afternoon, the buses will be out and back prior to that evening rush. So we believe we will miss the peak times of traffic, so as to avoid the concerns you're discussing.
So if we can have people working together with compromising and flexibility in the schedule, I believe it can work, but it may take some adjustments. So with that caveat, I'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9A10. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9B is a request from the Heart Hospital to build a helipad in Ward 4.
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up to speak against this? No? Would you like to? That's, actually, it's the relocation of a helipad that, as luck would have it, actually moves it farther away from the residences in the area.
That's correct.
So there were no protests, it was approved by the Planning Commission, and with that, I would like to move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9B1. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9B2 is a special permit at 11600 Northwest Westminster Road. This would provide for some mining of raw materials. John, you want to make the motion?
I move the item.
All right, cast your votes on Item 9B2. It passes unanimously. Item 9B3 is a request to operate a surgical center at 15103 North Pennsylvania Avenue. This is in Ward 8. Mark?
Yes, as you said, Mayor, this is a special permit to operate an emergency room and surgical center at 150th and Pennsylvania. It was approved by the Planning Commission on July 13th, and there's no opposition, so I'd move for its approval.
All right, we're voting on Item 9B3. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9C is an item that's up for final hearing today. It's been before the council a couple of times, has to do with some enforcement of parking downtown and other places. Is there a motion to approve 9C? Is there anyone here hoping to speak on 9C? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. And Item 9D is some associated fees as they relate to Item 9C that we just voted on. Is there a motion on 9D? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9E begins a series of items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. Many of these are in Ward 6, and Meg, we can just establish these any way you'd like, just with a series of motions. First one is on 8th and Northwest Chartel.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think the first four of these relate specifically to Red Andrews Park and the renovations that we're making there, and some changes to the parking. So I would move approval for E1.
Cast your votes, it passes unanimously.
E2, move approval.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously.
And move approval for E3.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously.
All righty, so now, the first three related to Red Andrews Park, and then the next three relate specifically to the Plaza District, and this was a request by one of our more famous residents, Mr. Wayne Coyne of the Flaming Lips, to restrict parking on one side of the street into the Class and Tanpan neighborhood between 13th and 16th. And, you know, these are residential neighborhoods and residential streets, they're narrow, and when there's parking on two sides, there's no opportunity for traffic to move back and forth. And so eliminating traffic on one side hopefully will facilitate traffic movement. So I would request approval of E4.
All right, cast your votes on 9E4. It passes unanimously.
And E5 is North Indiana between 13th and 14th. Move, request approval.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9E6.
And E6 is on North Indiana between 13th and 16th. I'd request approval.
All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 97.
And then 7, 8, and 9 all relate also to the Plaza District, but this is a different project on North Blackwelder. So I would ask for approval of E7.
Cast your votes, it passes unanimously.
E8.
Cast your votes, it passes unanimously.
And E9.
All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9E10 is a parking situation in Ward 7. John, would you like to make the motion?
All right, move the item.
All right, voting on Item 9E10, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. And Item 9E11 is also in Ward 7. John?
Move the item.
Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding some state-mandated court fees. Anything else you want to add to that, Jim?
No, LaShawn Thompson was here last council meeting to introduce that to us.
Okay, how about a motion then on 9F? Is there anyone here hoping to speak on 9F today? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, Sandra Sailor? Good morning, Sandra. Come on up.
I have a request on the property at 11212 North Brier Avenue.
All right, Ed, that's in Ward 2.
Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. That it not be condemned or determined as dilapidated, and that I be given the opportunity to sell the property at a lower price, and I have some people looking at it currently.
As you can see, it's had a fire, I believe it was in July. It's in bad shape. It will probably, it can be rebuilt, but it's substantially, probably not substantially feasible to do it, from my understanding, from talking with her. She's, she's been trying to sell it, but she doesn't have a contract in place now. We'd be, and if she does sell it, we'll work with the new owner also on it. It's, it'd be better to keep it on the list.
Okay, Sandra, it looks like we, we need to keep it on the list. Do you have anybody in mind that you're gonna sell this to?
I've got three relatives that are looking at it now.
Okay. Here's what I suggest. You ought to get Charles's business card and interact with him, and let us know about the progress of your hopeful sale.
Yes, sir.
And we'll work with the next owner, if that's the appropriate thing. But we can't, on behalf of your neighbors, we can't allow the house to stay in this condition and stay upright. So if you're not gonna sell it, and if you're not gonna tear it down, we'll probably have to tear it down for you. But Charles will give you a heads-up on all of that. If you'll just work with him, we'll do the best we can to help facilitate and get it to your satisfaction.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Is there a motion then on, on Item 9GA? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. All right, Item 9GB. Anybody on that one? All right, 9G1. Yeah, Michael, come on up.
Look at this property in this man's district here. I don't like him, not even close. He's an incompetent, sorry, excuse me.
Michael, easy, easy.
Well, I'm just, I'm in the First Amendment.
Which project would you like?
Okay, G1, back to G1, I have the house on Northeast 23rd Street.
Okay.
What, oh my goodness, Lord, I'm... I'm gonna give you the good one on this one this time. I believe that this is definitely a structure that absolutely, 100%, needs to be removed. I'm gonna give you the, this time, man, I'm gonna give you this one this time, because I walked by and probably fall in on me later. But at this time, it is a very good belief, I believe that this place should be torn down, and have we contacted owners yet on it, to give them an opportunity like we did this lady here? I think it's on due process, a fair chance to give these people an opportunity to tear it down, or rebuild it, or how much time they may need, or what's going on with that.
All right, thanks, Michael.
Can I ask him? I'm asking what's going on.
You're asking what's, more information on 9G1?
Yes.
All right.
It's, it's on the list.
Is that what he's standing for? Did he just answer the lady a while ago? I'm asking the same property in northeast side of Oklahoma City now.
The property's been notified, it's on the list.
Okay, I'm not asking you, he's the man that handled that idea, sir. I'm talking, that's what he's standing for, right?
All right.
We notify all the owners of this property, given by state law, opportunity to remove it.
Okay, when was the last notification?
Of course, this location?
Yes.
I believe this is 2730 Northwest 23rd.
These people that this property's gonna be torn down if they don't do something with it.
They were notified August 16th.
August 16th, so how much, how much time then, since it's just August 16th, they haven't really had a chance really, have they been contacted? Did they respond back to you?
They have 30 days after this hearing to contact us.
30 days, now, see, now everybody who now, who lives in Ward 7, who may be watching this, would have an opportunity now to know what it takes, the circumstance and situation, before the property, instead of thinking immediately that it be torn down. That's the only reason I'm asking them questions. Okay, now, so the first time you contacted them was when?
August 16th.
The first time, it was August 16th. Now, so in other words, if this person come in and see you sometime this week, they may give an opportunity to extend having to tear it down, because maybe they can find a developer or something.
Sure.
Okay, that's all we need to know. Thank you very much, but again, Pettis, you shocked me with this one you did, the right me with this one you did, the right this time.
All right, we're voting on item 9G1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the items listed under 9H? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9I? All right, Michael, which I would you like to speak on?
You got anything Ward 7 up there? Anything Ward 7? I don't see it, huh? I'll let y'all have it.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding the removal of property from the abandoned buildings list. All right. Larry, this property's in Ward 3, okay? Leaving it on the list? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9K is our long anticipated agreement with the Chickasaw Tribe to move forward on the American Indian Cultural Center.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to go over items K, L, and M together, because they're all related at this point in time. Item K is a real estate purchase and sale and post-closing operations and funding agreement. In 2012, in an effort to assist with completion of the American Indian Cultural Center, the mayor and council adopted a resolution to provide $9 million in funding toward the American Indian Cultural Center. The project struggled to get support for construction costs at the state for the next several years. In 2015, the state passed House Bill 2237 that gave responsibility for the American Indian Cultural Center to the city. The city went through a due diligence review, and we were probably close to the point of rejecting the state's proposal when the Chickasaw Nation stepped up and offered us $14 million to help fund operations and to provide support for the completion costs of the AICCM over the $65 million budget. In February 16th, we entered into a joint resolution with the Chickasaw Nation where we agreed to work together to move the AICCM forward. And then this agreement is the next step. It's filling out the terms and conditions of that resolution. We've been working on this for some time. This past summer, the American Indian Cultural Center Foundation hired Jim Pepper Henry as Executive Director of the AICCM. And Jim Pepper Henry is in the audience, if you can stand here. Most of you have had an opportunity to meet with him. Jim Pepper Henry has extensive museum experience, including the Smithsonian National Museum of the American Indian, of the American Indian, the Anchorage Museum, the Herd Museum in Phoenix, and most recently as Executive Director of the Gilchrist Museum in Tulsa. As we're nearing completion of the agreement, a professional, a proposal was introduced that would move more of the funding for operations to pre-opening preparation and operations. With this proposal, it's represented that a performer could be, has been delivered that will result in increased revenues that will reduce the time needed to get the American Indian Cultural Center to a sustainable operations. We're moving a little money into, of the $14 million into pre-opening activities. Other terms include the American Indian, the AICCM, completion cost is agreed upon to be $65 million. The Chickasaw Enterprise will provide up to $15 million to support unforeseen requirements over the completion cost. The Chickasaw Nation and the city will be involved to review of value engineering and construction plans and agreements. The Chickasaw Enterprise will provide $14 million for operations. The Chickasaw Enterprise will develop the property surrounding the American Indian Cultural Center Museum, and has an option to develop a portion of the property east of Eastern Avenue. The city, through the Oklahoma City Environmental Development Trust, will contract with the American Indian Cultural Center Foundation for the operations of the AICCM. And that's very similar to what we're doing with the Myriad Gardens, and also with the new MAPS Street Park. A finance committee will be created to review and approve the American Indian Cultural Museum budgets and withdrawals from the Operations Escrow account. Two members from the city, the Chickasaw Enterprise and the Foundation, will be included on that. And again, that's very similar to how we handle the Myriad Gardens and the new MAPS Street Park. The next steps, closing on this agreement, and the agreements with the OMES will occur at the same time and should take about 90 days. The foundation has about $20 million in donations at this time. They're continuing their work to get the, collect on the additional commitments that they have to finish the construction of the AICC. The city will provide $9 million for completion costs 12 months after the notice to proceed. We anticipate the notice proceeding mobilization will probably take place in October. The city, the Chickasaw Nation, the foundation will work together on a plan for sustainable future operations of the AICCM. And Mr. Jim Pepper Henry will play a critical role in the development of those plans. I'm confident this project would not be moving forward and have a path to further success if it wasn't for the involvement of the Chickasaw Nation at this point in time.
I'm confident of that, too.
Okay, that's item K. Item L is a memorandum of understanding between the city, the state of Oklahoma, the AICC-MLD, which is a organization which is solely owned by the Chickasaw Nation, the AICC Foundation, and the Native American Cultural and Education Authority for review of construction plans and agreements. This MOU is with the Oklahoma Office of Management and Enterprise Services, OMES, and the previous mentioned organizations that I just mentioned. This MOU ensures that the city and the Chickasaw Nation will be involved in reviewing construction plans and the agreements that we are involved in, value engineering to manage the construction costs of the AICCM. This is a requirement for the Chickasaw, there is a requirement for Chickasaw Enterprise to provide up to $15 million for unforeseen costs associated with the AICCM. And then item M, the last agreement, is a resolution addressing issues related to closing. The resolution authorizes the mayor to sign any documents for closing on the agreement with the state of Oklahoma and the Chickasaw Enterprise. The resolution designates the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust as a public entity to contract with the AICCF for the operations of the museum. And the resolution requests the OCEDT negotiate an agreement with the American Indian Cultural Center Foundation in a timely manner and in accordance with the agreement of the Chickasaw Enterprise. And it just kind of, it covers the closing and the things that will come up in the closing. So the first is the agreement with the Chickasaw sub-entity. The second agreement is a memorandum of understanding amongst a number of parties for the completion of it on value engineering and plan review. And this is just a resolution that we do in bond closings and such that gives the mayor to authorize to finalize any documents that come up. This has been a significant team effort as we've gotten to this point, and I want to recognize a number of people that in the audience has been involved. First, Bill Lance is the Secretary of Commerce with the Chickasaw Nation, done a great job. Secondly, you know, Jim Pepper Henry is behind him, who's the museum director, who we have great anticipation for his work on the project. And then John Kennedy has been involved on the property development with the Chickasaws. Blake Wade is back there, who's been involved with the Native American Cultural Center for several years. Leon Smith has done a yeoman's job in generating private funds to help toward the completion of the American Indian Cultural Center. John Michael Smith is here, who's been involved in a number of legal operations that has gone forth, along with his associate, Michael O'Neill, who's in the room. And then I need to recognize Wiley Williams, who's been our lead counsel for the city of Oklahoma City, and Craig Freeman, who's not with us today, who's been the point person for the city of Oklahoma City. So there's been a lot of very impressive people involved in this, and it takes a village sometimes to get a project done. And so I'm really proud that we're able to get to this point today. Do you have to answer any questions?
All right, comments from council?
Your honor, before we vote, I have to recuse myself. One of our offices may have performed some work for the Chickasaw Nation or one of its related entities during this past year, so I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
And one additional comment, John Michael Williams, not John Michael Smith. So I just wanted to make that small correction.
Wow, sorry about that.
All right, we're ready to vote. First vote will be on item 9K. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. How about a motion on 9L? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 9M. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all very much. All right, we're on to item 9N. And this would ratify the name of the new MAPS 3 Downtown Park as Scissor Tail Park. It's in Ward 6. Cast your votes on 9N. Passed unanimously.
Mayor, I really want to thank you for that whole process. It was wonderful. We had so many citizens engaged. I think it's a terrific way to handle this, and people are going to love that name way into the future, so.
And I note they're doing a lot of dirt work over at the park. They've dug the hole for the lake, and then the rain came and filled it up within about two days. So we got, we got a lake. We don't have the rest of the park right now, but the lake is, the lake is in.
Yeah, that may or may not have been the plan.
All right, item 9O is a resolution requesting by the Wildwood Hills Heights Neighborhood Association to name the walking trail, the Dolphin, in Dolphin Wharton Park, the Sherman M. Carthen Walking Trail. Is there anyone in here representing the neighborhood today? All right, how about a motion then from council on 9O? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9P1 and 2 have to do with the continual efforts on criminal justice reform, and this has to do with our relationship with some other municipalities inside of Oklahoma County.
Right. The chamber has put off an effort led by Clay Bennett to take a look at judicial, criminal justice in the county and city levels. And there's a lot of recommendations that have come through. And so what we're looking at is having a group to officially implement some of those. And we decided that the best implementation tool would be an interlocal entity, a government agency, or a, in a local group that includes the county of Oklahoma, the city of Oklahoma City, the city of Edmund, and the city of Midwest City. And we stopped at that point, because there's so many cities in the county, but those, after Midwest City, there's a pretty big jump after that. And so what this would do is have representatives from these groups, as long as other representatives that would be appointed, to help implement that. And it's judges that will be involved, and people that have been involved. And I do want to point out that we've had a lot of people involved in this task force. Mayor Cornet's been involved. I've been involved. Judge James has been involved. Chief City's been involved. Chief Berry's been involved. LaShawn Thompson from our courts has been involved. So we've had a lot of people that are looking at our part of the situation. The next item, and this interlocal agreement is an entity that's similar to what we've done for regional transit. So that's, it's the same format, if you will, for that. Part 2 is, we're going to have some staff to help implement the recommendations that came out of the VERA. We think the budget will be about $300,000. So we came up with a formula for the implementation of that. And the county picks up half, and the cities pick up half. And the cities' half are allocated amongst the three cities based upon their population. So our piece of it is about 41%. So roughly, if it's a $300,000 budget, our cost will be about $120,000, a little bit over that as we go forward with it. And this is going to be a little bit amorphous as we be, we've been, we don't know exactly what the end game is on this, but we're really pleased with the recommendations that are being made. And I think it's, this could be one of the more impactful things that we do for Oklahoma City and Oklahoma Counties forward. Do you have to answer any questions?
All right. We have a motion on 9P1? Yeah, Larry has a question.
Jim, I'm kind of concerned. Canadian County is not included in this.
That's correct.
Okay. And yet, a tremendous growth is occurring in Oklahoma City citizens in Canadian County.
Yes.
Was there any discussion, and what is Canadian County's feelings towards being left out of this?
Well, if you're going to go Canadian County, we've got to go Cleveland County. I think we decided that our urgent issue was probably with Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County, and we want to focus in that area. That doesn't mean this couldn't be broadened in the future. But right now, we took a bite that we thought we could, we could handle at this point. It could certainly be expanded as we go in the future.
No, I'm aware of that. Of course, you know, the citizens in Canadian County who live in Oklahoma City also are very sensitive to, do we really care about them, or do we only care about people in quote downtown, unquote? And this would seem to possibly add fuel to that argument, which is an invalid argument, because we obviously do care. So that's why I brought it up. I think that could be a phase 2 approach as we get down the line. It's a, it's a, it's a complex issue at this point in time. And I think broadening it to more entities would not be helpful until we have a few more successes where we're at at this point.
Well, and I think one of the big deals on this is the Oklahoma County jail is kind of the backdrop of all this. And so, that's another reason why it's specifically to Oklahoma County. But can you speak to the jail and what this advisory council might look at in terms of the jail?
Clearly, the jail's a catalyst for this. And recommendations on improvements for the jail should, I think it was all agreed, should be designed based upon the numbers we have and the processes and services we need to provide through this process. We're putting everybody into a maximum security facility. And that may not, that probably isn't the best solution as we go forward. If we can get some people into mental health facilities, and into treatment facilities for addiction, and into some more of a minimum level standards. And obviously, we probably still need some maximum security areas. But I think we need to understand what it's going to look like when we get through this process, and then identify what the building needs are, and then go forward from that point.
Counsel, in terms of operations of the jail and potential new facilities to be built?
Ultimately.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, are we ready to vote on item 9P1?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 9P2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9Q, understand we do not need executive session. Is there a motion to approve? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9R, understand we do not need executive session. How about a motion to approve? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9S, understand we do not need executive session. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9T, I understand we do not need executive session. Is there a motion on 9T? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9U, I understand we do need executive session, so a motion to move 9U to executive session would be in order? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9V is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9V? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there a second? All right, we're voting on item 10A1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. Mark, do you have anything for us?
Just briefly to echo on Doug's comments earlier today, the Wellness Center in northwest Oklahoma City, as of Friday night, went north of 3,600 members, which is unbelievable.
It is. John? All right, Meg?
Just briefly, we had a great retreat on Friday, Friday afternoon, with our new youth council members. And I just was delighted to get a chance to meet them all, and looking forward to a really good year with a great group of young people.
All right, David?
No, thank you.
All right. Todd? Larry? Ed?
Couple things. One on the Wellness Center. I promised this patient I would give voice to her concern, just as we're learning. I've had success getting a lot of elderly, especially elderly women, to do aquatic therapy, and even to go to the Wellness Center. They will not do aquatic therapy with other men. They don't want co-ed. So that's a feedback. It's just my small anecdotal experience with my practice. But I think it's a real phenomenon that I've heard over many years, just if we might, and I have a call-in to the director, and I'm sure we can, but if there's some time, maybe we have period in the pool just for men and just for women, I think that will, so that's why you have places like Mademoiselle on 63rd and May that does aquatic therapy just for women. Just, I think, a lot of, I think, we separate age, and I think also maybe by gender will help with getting more people into aquatic therapy.
I'll call Bill Fleming and talk to him about it.
Thank you. Second thing I wanted to ask, so last week, there was an article in the Tulsa World about legal expenditures by IMSA. And to me, it's just, it's very concerning. It's, and I just want to ask Kenny, just to get a frame of reference. In this article, remember, three, three years ago, there was a gentleman that worked with Paramedics Plus in Texas who filed a whistleblower claim against Paramedics Plus and IMSA. Two years later, the US attorneys joined that suit, so about a year ago. And since the US attorneys joined that suit, IMSA has spent $2 million in legal fees, in additional legal fees just related to these lawsuits. So one, and one firm is in Texas, where they've charged $723,000. The lead attorney charged IMSA $825 an hour. The junior attorneys basically charged $400 to $600 an hour, and the paralegals charged IMSA $200 an hour. Williamson, two, two weeks after it was first brought to the IMSA board's attention, asked if his, if he could have, hire a separate attorney firm and have those expenses reimbursed to him through IMSA. And he's run up $700,000 in legal fees. That's about $77,000 a month in legal fees for Williamson. It's about $200,000 a month in legal fees to IMSA. So... So Kenny, for a frame of reference, over the, all the years and decades you've been here, has the City of Oklahoma City ever paid any attorney for any division of the city for any purpose something like $825 an hour?
No, our outside counsel is, our highest is $240 an hour.
Have we ever paid paralegals $200 an hour?
No.
Have we paid half of 820? Have we ever paid more than $400 an hour?
I think we had one that was around $400 an hour, but he was a senior partner of a law firm.
Okay.
We have a specialty attorney on the water issues. It's not, not, he's under 400, but he's over 300.
Right. So Steve Williamson is the highest-paid public employee, I think, in the state. He makes more than all of us combined. He makes about 10 times more than our mayor. There's the governor. I mean, there's basically no public employee that I'm aware of that makes more. There may be, but not that I'm aware of. And that was my concern, is that he's engaged in activity which, there's a mountain of evidence that I think he should have been removed many, many years ago. And I was concerned that he continues to draw this $250,000 salary. But now, the bigger issue is if anybody thought we were just going to be able to settle with the federal government for a single-digit fraction of the $19 million that they were originally asking for, we're blowing away, but we've already spent $2 million. And now, they're asking the Tulsa City Council tomorrow to raise the rate from $1,300 a trip to $1,700 to help pay for these extra legal fees. They're only going to do it in the eastern division, and they're not going to do it in the western division. I called a Tulsa City Councilor, knows nothing, they've had none of the briefings and executive session like we've had, knows none of the allegations the feds have made in their 50-page pleading. They're completely in the dark, and yet they're going to be asked to increase the transport rate by $400, I guess, tomorrow night, to pay for these exorbitant, obscene legal fees. My deposition is in two weeks, they told me to block off six hours. I mean, I guess these attorneys are coming from Texas, and I'm a very peripheral, I mean, we're just getting into, really starting to spend the money. So there's going to be millions and millions of dollars. This month, starting on Friday, you know, Oklahoma City residents can choose to opt in or opt out of the IMSA program. It starts this Friday from September 1st, and it runs through September 30th. I think, for me personally, I have to opt out. I mean, I can no longer, it's $3.65 a month, it's not a great deal of money, but I would encourage those who are considering, you know, to study what's happening with IMSA. IMSA would have you believe that they didn't pay kickbacks, but instead returned a share of our profit to IMSA, a standard in legal practice in this industry. It's not, it's not about billing practices. You don't spend $77,000 a month. It's a corruption case. It's a, this is what corruption looks like. This is what happens with corruption and fraudulent activity, and then the amount of resources and money that it requires to cover up and defend those corrupt practices. That's what this is about, is that for 15 years, you had millions of dollars going back and forth, and there was nothing in writing. There was no contract. There was never any stipulation as to when the payments would be made, or how they would be calculated. You can't reproduce the time of payment or the amount of payments. The payments aren't reflected on expense reports. You were able to circumvent the bidding process of things that should have been, gone to a bidding process that cost more than $25,000. Instead, they were able to bypass that bidding process on construction, paving, data systems, consulting, marketing, and technology services. And then they used it for political contributions. And if that was the only issue, was the political contributions, giving $5,000 to the MAPS-3 campaign, giving $15,000 to First T, giving money to Mayor Bartlet, trying to give money to me, if that was the only issue that would warrant Williamson's removal, an admission of wrongdoing by IMSA, and showing us how that could never happen again, if that was the only issue. Instead, this has just gone on for years with all this mountain of evidence. And so I think, you know, I've called for Williamson's to be removed by the board many times. Nothing's happening. I know that Mick, Jim, and others have made efforts. There's no movement, and we're spending millions of dollars on these attorney fees. IMSA needs to replace Williamson. They need to admit the wrongdoing, show us the structural changes so that this can't happen again. And I think they need to agree to oversight by a third party, whether that's the state, or the feds, or somebody else. I think that's a critical, critical issue. And I would ask those, especially if you have a primary and a secondary insurance, if you're relatively healthy, you may consider opting out this month. You have to, you have to opt out, and then you'll, it'll come off of your utility bill $3.65. But at some point, we have to do something different, because there's no response from the IMSA board, there's no response from IMSA, and they're digging in. I think that they actually believe they can, they can convince everyone that this is just a billing issue, and win this by spending millions and millions of dollars in attorney fees. Thanks.
All right, James? All right, city manager reports.
Thank you. This morning, we have an economic impacts of arts study, and Julia Kurt, who's the executive director of the Oklahomans for the Arts, and Kelsey Carper, who's a project manager for the statewide arts and economic prosperity, have a report to make this morning. And Julia?
Good morning. I'm Julia Kurt, and I'm here to talk a little bit about a study we've been doing over the last two years. Thank you for having us, I think, being here on the day when the American Indian Cultural Center Agreement moves forward, and when the Plaza District Festival permit gets passed is really appropriate, because what we're talking about is the economic benefit of arts and culture here in the city. Oklahomans for the Arts is a statewide arts advocacy organization, and we work with different partners across the state for things like this, research. We're really proud to work with the Oklahoma Arts Council, which is our state art agency, and to work with the Oklahoma Museums Association across the state. We conducted a specific Greater Oklahoma City study, which you have in your hands, and our partners there are Allied Arts, our United Arts Fund here, Arts Council Oklahoma City, and the City of Oklahoma City. We're really pleased to work closely with the Office of Arts and Culture, who have been invaluable for this study, and also just for planning and coordinating with the sector. They've really helped the sectors move along. So I'd like to acknowledge the Oklahoma City Arts Commission Chair, Liz Eichman, who's here today, and the staff member, Robbie Kinsel, who, amazing how many connections she makes for us. This study really looks at the impact of arts and culture, and we know the impact on education and on community building, but what we wanted to look at is really, what is the economic return on investing in arts and culture? Especially as we look at public funding for the arts, and the importance of public funding for the arts at the state level, that's primarily through the Oklahoma Arts Council, which is our state art agency, provides quite a bit of funding for programs and projects and community outreach here in central Oklahoma. And then at the city level, this would fall under things like cultural facilities, public art, of course, the Office of Arts and Culture, and then programs like we heard about today in the parks. So looking at that city investment, and what is that return to the economy for investment in arts and culture? I want to introduce Kelsey Carper, who's been the project manager, and I look forward to talking to you all more about this study.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to present to you this morning. We're really proud to be able to bring these results to you, and thank you for your partnership on this study. I just want to give you some of the highlights. You've all got the full reports in front of you. But as Julia said, this, this study is really about changing the conversation around investing in the arts, from one, being one about a charity, to one about investing in an industry which supports jobs, it generates government revenue, and it also is a key part of tourism. This study is the largest and most comprehensive of its kind ever conducted, including cities across the country ranging in population from about 1,500 to around 4 million. And even in those smallest communities, we see a real economic impact from the activity of their arts and cultural organizations. I do want to point out that only nonprofit and municipal arts agencies are included in this study. There are no for-profit entertainment businesses such as Broadway, or Motion Picture, or even individual artists included in this study. While they are, of course, important to our creative ecology, they're outside of the scope of this study in particular. The reason for focusing on nonprofits specifically is because much of government and philanthropic dollars are directed towards those entities, and so it's appropriate for those funders to ask, what is the return on their investment? So this study really answers that question. The methodology used for this study is very conservative and reliable. I won't go into the details, you have that in the report there, but I just want you to know that the numbers that we're looking at are on the conservative side. For example, there are no estimates made for organizations who did not respond to our survey. While there are more eligible organizations out there, we did not make estimates for those who did not report back to us. So before we get into the Oklahoma City-specific numbers, oh, looks like our labels are not showing up correctly up there. But before we look at the Oklahoma City-specific numbers, I wanted to give you one statewide number so that you could see how Oklahoma City fits into the bigger picture. The blue side on the left, where it says category name, should be organizational spending. So the, and on the right, the red side is audience spending. The total economic activity is comprised of these two numbers, spending by the organizations themselves, as well as the spending by their audiences who are attending their events. So in statewide, the economic impact was $872.8 million. So let's look at Oklahoma City specifically. This is Greater Oklahoma City, which is a 10-county region that's defined by the Chamber of Commerce. And in Greater Oklahoma City, the nonprofit arts and cultural organizations spent an estimated $220.5 million in fiscal year 2015. And I think this is a mythbuster for a lot of people, as many don't realize that arts organizations are also businesses. They employ people, they purchase goods and services within their community, they're heavily involved in the marketing and promotion of their regions. In short, arts organizations tend to be very good business citizens. And some comparisons, we thought you might be interested in hearing some comparisons to some of our other peer cities. The reports from all of those study regions across the country are available on the Americans for the Arts website, which allows us to make those comparisons. And looking at the total economic activity, Greater Oklahoma City ranked 10th out of the 66 multi-county regions which were included in this study. And our Greater Oklahoma City area saw more economic activity than some of our peer cities like Nashville had reported in their studies. So I think that's something we can be proud of here. In the Greater Oklahoma City area, all of this spending that we're talking about by the organizations and their audiences supports a lot of full-time equivalent jobs, over 20,500 jobs supported through the spending. And our arts organizations employ a lot more than just artists and musicians and curators. They also pay people like builders, and plumbers, and accountants, and printers, and occupations spanning many industries. So I just want to point out that this job number does include jobs supported throughout the community by that spending, not just jobs at those arts organizations. And local and state government also receives revenue as a result of all of this spending, with $61.7 million in revenue in 2015 as a result of this economic activity, and you can see how that breaks down between local and state government there. So this really shows that beyond their public benefit, there's also a significant economic return as a result of the community investment of these organizations. Like all industries, spending by arts organizations has this measurable economic impact. But unlike most industries, the arts generate a bounty of event-related spending by their audiences, which is kind of unique to our sector. And a lot of that spending, those dollars land in the pockets of local business owners like parking garages, and retail stores, and restaurants, hotels, and even local babysitters. And I'm sorry that the category names aren't showing up correctly up there, but this is a breakdown of the categories of spending, such as meals, transportation, souvenirs, lodging. And so these are averages that our audience members reported in the 2,346 audience surveys we gathered in Oklahoma City last year. So this is what the average spending looks like. These are averages, so they might look a little low because not all audience members reported spending in every category. In addition to asking audiences about their spending information, we also asked the attendees to provide their ZIP code, so we could determine whether they were local or non-local to the city where the event was taking place. And so this is how it breaks down, again, I'm sorry it's not showing up, but we had 23% of those attendees were from outside the county where the event was taking place. So those people were traveling in to see this event. And as you can imagine, their spending differs from the locals, with nonlocals spending almost three times as much per person, per event, beyond the cost of admission. Nonlocals are spending about $92.94 each. We also asked them what the primary purpose of their trip was, and 66% of them said that the arts event was the primary reason for their trip. We also asked the locals what they would have done if that event wasn't taking place in their hometown, and 53% of them said that they would have traveled to another community to attend something similar. So we think that these data really show the power that the arts have to not only attract visitors to a community, but also to retain locals and their discretionary spending right there at home. These are some of the national partners who signed on to this study and gave it their endorsement. They include public and private sector leaders that steer billions of dollars in arts funding and also create arts-friendly policies. They're partners because they also believe the arts are a fundamental component of a healthy community, but also because they approve of the methodology and the findings of this study. I'm sure you'll recognize a lot of these entities, such as the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the National Alliance of Community Economic Development Associations, and the National League of Cities, who I'm sure you all have seen their State of the Cities report for this year. They identified as the number-one issue affecting city leaders this year is economic development. And within economic development, they identified five key subject areas, with arts and culture being one of those five. So they are really recognizing the significance of the arts to developing a healthy community. I also have to recognize our local partners across the state, who helped us to make this a truly comprehensive study, and we just wanted to give them our thanks in this public forum for participating. And finally, these are some links where you can go to find additional information. The Americans for the Arts website has all of the reports nationwide. The Oklahomans for the Arts website also has all of the reports statewide, as well as all the local reports for here in Oklahoma. And of course, you can contact us at any time for more information if you have any questions about this study. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very good.
Just a quick comment, if I may. I would encourage your group to explore what's happening in certain other major cities with programs like tax increment financing, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, the Museum of Modern Art, their TIF is just beginning to expire. Charlotte, North Carolina, has tax increment financing programs in place. We're pretty familiar with those TIFs around here, and one that could be focused on the arts would be something I think you all may want to explore and take advantage of. Thank you.
The next item is city council priority briefings. Last year, we did change our priorities a little bit, and one of those is now to continue to pursue social and criminal justice initiatives. And I think we're starting with Chief City.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Council, Mayor. I'm happy to be here this morning to tell you a few of the things that we are doing and tracking through our LFR to support the city council's priorities on the continuing to pursue social and criminal justice initiatives. As you can see on the next slide, excuse me, the police department measures the percentage of residents citywide reporting they feel safe. That's, that actually is done through the city survey process. The percentage of officers who have received procedural justice training, the percent change in the number of people incarcerated for municipal charges, that's a, that's a recent tracking of some of the things that, that the courts have done and that we've worked with through the courts. Also, the number of prisoner days utilized by the Oklahoma City, by Oklahoma City at the Oklahoma County Jail. So the next slide shows you the percentage of residents citywide reporting that they feel safe, and this is determined through the survey that's feel safe, and this is determined through the survey that's done every year. You can see since 2007, it's fluctuated considerably. Our base percentage is 55% that we established in 2005 when we first did our LFR, and that's what the survey showed at that point. So we kind of base it on that. You can see it's fluctuated over the years. We lost some ground in 2016, down to 48% from 53. This last survey that just came in, we just got the results from the summer, shows that that's been steady at 48%. Again, our target is set at 55. You know, a lot of this may be associated with crime, a lot of it may be associated with a lot of other things. But I can tell you, in the first half of 2017, both our person crimes and property crimes have each gone down by 4%. This year, we're currently sitting at 53 homicides for this year. People like to benchmark that, although I like to look at assaults overall, which have been down some this year. Homicides are at 53. This time last year, we had about 52. So we're about where we were last year. So the next slide is just, it's really just a definition of procedural justice. And we define it as an idea of fairness in the process that resolves disputes and allocate resources. It's not a practice, but a philosophy and a movement which promotes positive organizational change, upholds police legitimacy in the community, enhances officer safety. Now, this is pretty much in line with also a national definition that best practices in policing or havoc across the nation. In the LFR, we identify the continuing need to maintain and increase public trust. If not addressed, will result in a negative public perception, decreased ability to recruit applicants, and a decreased citizen satisfaction and cooperation. Our procedural justice strategies include continue to review and revise policies in our procedures, continue to participate in community outreach through continued programs and partnerships, expand the concept of procedural justice to employees throughout the department, through our recruits, and also through in-service training that we hold annually with our officers. Also, one of our strategies is continue the implementation of body-worn camera program. The next slide shows our procedural justice initiatives. Police departments have made significant progress in implementing and promoting a lot of the procedural justice concepts. We've actually been pretty aggressive over the last several years in trying to take a lot of best practices throughout the country and implementing those within our own police department. One of them is body-worn cameras. As you know, I know you've been following that. We have 100 body-worn cameras out now. We received a grant to get 200 more. We should have probably the additional 200, which would cover the entire operations bureau. All the officers on the street should have a body-worn camera sometime in October. We're buying, we're actually, the vendor that we have has upgraded the cameras, so they're actually going to replace all of the cameras we originally purchased for free with the new cameras. So we'll have 300 of the next-generation cameras out in the field. We've changed a lot of, we have a procedural justice policy that we've read. We have a de-escalation, we've had de-escalation training and a de-escalation procedure that are in place. We incorporated de-escalation training almost two years ago, to a certain extent, and have grown that and plan on incorporating that in all the training with our recruits and with our officers in the field. Again, it is a best practice. We have an extensive procedure involving that, and that procedure was implemented probably about six months ago. We also have trained on implicit bias. We actually had a program, came in where we trained the trainer. It was basically certified, if you'd say, through the Department of Justice and the Bureau of Justice Administration. And they came in and actually trained our trainers, and we put that on. Over a year ago is when we had that. Our increased community outreach, you know, I could probably sit here and talk to you for an hour about some of the things that's being done. And it's, we really have, I mean, we've really, really upped that part of policing within this community. We did a lot before, at least I thought we did, but we are overwhelmingly doing so much more now than we have been in the past. And some of those is, you know, really increasing our meetings with the community leaderships, really throughout the community, both in the African-American community, Hispanic community, just across the board. We have a very diverse group of population now. We've increased the number of forums over race and police relationships by quite a bit. We're holding quarterly community meetings and the police topics in our divisions. We're now requiring all the divisions to actually have these neighborhood quarterly meetings, set up agendas, set up topics of interest, things that might be relevant, and anything else that they want to talk about. So every division, when their division will hold those at their locations. Our state grant funding, we have a significant amount of state grant funding that we received last year. We've also applied for more money for next year and have some initiatives that at some point, if we receive that, will come before city council. You know, in that grant, we really do try to address the high crime, violent crime areas. Some of it is some traditional overtime with more officers and visibility. The one we did northeast, which we think's been very successful, is actually getting officers out of the police cars, knocking on doors, talking to the citizens. And we've got a lot of positive feedback. And right now, all the data shows, the last data I heard, which is still a little bit dated, we've reduced the crime, the violent crime in that area where we have knocked on those doors and made that individual contact and talking to citizens and what their concerns are. We've reduced it by 20%, which is significant in such a short period of time. We're working with apartment complexes, with SEP TED environmental issues, and again, tons and tons of work, community forums, partnerships with Oklahoma City Public Schools, MetroTech, private entities. You've all heard Coffee with a Cop. There's a lot of other individual, smaller initiatives like that occurring. FACT, we've changed, we're changing kind of the direction of our FACT program. We're working closely with municipal courts with our juvenile intervention program, which I'm really excited about, and trying to take referrals from the courts. Judge James has been great and very, very supportive in trying to develop a program through our FACT program. We're going to call it JIP, which is our juvenile intervention program. And then beyond that, create leadership for individuals that come out of that. So so far, we've had two classes, and we've gotten, we have received positive feedback in relationship to that program. And basically, what it does is it takes a lot of those juveniles that may be first time in municipal court, that they would remand to some type of community service. Well, they have to go through about six weeks of this program. It's just much more structured. When they get out of that and they complete that, if they do, then their charges will be dismissed in city court. So we also have PAL cadet. They're all supported with grants, and they're all supported in some way by private entities, all of them being very, very successful at this point. Next slide, please. You can see the percentage change in the number of people incarcerated from municipal charges, 26% drop 2015 to 2017. Courts, I mean, my hat's off, they have done a lot over the last several years in the things that they've initiated to help make this happen and reduce the number of people actually incarcerated. We have done things within the police department, incite and release, and we're also looking at further charges that we can actually reduce that more. I'm not sure you'll see 26% from here because that's a significant drop, but you will see additional reductions, I believe, in the incarceration rate as we identify more charges. Where really, individuals don't need to go to jail. And these aren't violent charges, these aren't assaults and those types of things. But they're pretty minor charges. And again, most of the city ordinance charges are pretty minor charges. The next slide will show you the number of prisoner days that are used by Oklahoma City at Oklahoma County. That's a 42% drop. And a lot of that just has to do with the courts. The courts have been very, very aggressive about OR-ing, letting people out in their own recognizance under a certain shorter period of time automatically that they're released, where they don't have to post bond. They're doing a lot more that. I think they hold a minimum of eight indig- hearings a week now to try to keep people who cannot pay out of jail. So and so we're just putting fewer people in jail. We are not putting, the policies were changed with the courts and the police department, that anybody that has failed to pay and they have a warrant for them, we're not putting any of those individuals in jail. They will have an additional court hearing, but we're just not putting people in jail for not being able to pay anymore. So that's part of that reduction. I mean, that 42% is large. And it's also saved the city a large amount of money. Our contract now, as a result, this year, went down about $600,000.
Such a huge drop. What would this look like if you went back before 2015?
In two, well...
Is 48,000...
Here's the problem with going back. To get just to 2015, we had to do a hand count because we didn't track it. So, you know, I can't, probably, most likely, beyond, before 2015, it's going to be pretty much the same. That would be my guess. Because a lot of these initiatives by the courts and some of the things that we've done, didn't, did not occur before 2015. So those numbers would be steady. Now, I know the overall court, I mean, overall jail population at different points was extreme. I mean, they have about, you know, maybe 2,200. It's gone up as high as 2,600 at times. A lot has to do with the jail actually contracting with the feds to house prisoners. So I can't tell you how many were ours versus how many were, you know, federal prisoners and so forth. A large number are still county. And as the city manager alluded to with the task force, you know, the city council's working, I mean, the county is working pretty hard within the courts to do the same thing. And that's to really kind of process individuals in the county jail much more quickly and try to adjudicate a lot of their cases much more quickly than they have in the past. And they are working on some things. They're not there yet, but I anticipate that that being also created a significant drop in the jail population. Because a lot of them that are in there for long periods of time now are felony charges. They're actually going to be state charges, not our charges.
Is there, can we push this down more, you think?
Yes. I'm not sure we can reach that percentage because the things that we've done, the courts have done, have caused this significant, I'm not, further, there's other things we can do, but you're going to see some further drops, I believe. It's just not, it won't be...
40% in two years.
Well, we could probably look at the, how much we've paid the county every year. You said it's a $600,000 drop. I mean, have we ever seen a drop until the last couple of years?
Well, they, no. I mean, in 2014, we had almost a $3 million contract. This year, we have a $2 million contract. So there has been some drop in prior, you know, prior years. I'm not sure I can tell you what all that has contributed to. But from, you know, from 2014 to 15, it went from about $3 million to 26, to about 2,600. And then in 16, it was, it's still 2,600. And then 17, it's about $2 million. So, you know, within that four-year period, it's dropped a million. It's reduced to the million.
Do you know, is the county jail, I'm going to use this term, it's probably not correct, but its occupancy rate, is it, you know, at some point, was it taking in more prisoners than what it was originally designed for? And is now, it's not taking in more than it's designed for? Do you know?
It's still taking in a few more than it's designed for. I'm just off the top of my head. It was designed for under 2,000, and it usually is more than that. So it's taking in more.
But it's still an improvement from where it was a few years ago.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to have some more questions.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That was just on that one. Okay. So, you know, the first few slides you showed indicated a decline in feeling safe. Could some of that be attributable to events occurring throughout our country? And people see that on TV, and they just get a sense, a general sense of unsafe, like this could happen, even though we haven't seen any of those types of events?
Right.
Could that...
Councilman, Chris Tatham, who's our, who does our annual survey every year, says that there's generally a downward trend in America, just because of dissatisfaction, whether it has to do with world terrorism, issues with the White House and Congress. And then in Oklahoma, we have our own issues with state government and education funding that do drive our overall numbers down.
Right. But the citizens do have an opportunity to kind of change that on September 12th. Just, you know, we could look at it from that perspective.
I've heard about that.
Yes. And then, Chief, I know there's a perception that multifamily housing units, apartment complexes are a source of problems or crime. That may or may not be true, but this isn't directed towards you. It's really for the council to consider, maybe instead of, as we go forward, focusing on TIFs to address, you know, economic development activities in the downtown area, we could use at least a portion of TIFs or some other means to put back into especially certain apartment complexes that have historically had problems. Somehow find financing. It's going to require a partnership, maybe even new owners in some situations. But if we could help with that, as in terms of funding, to not allow them to deteriorate to the point where they just automatically attract problem individuals, is something...
That could be difficult because there are a lot of apartment owners that do well and are well-managed. And you don't want to put a TIF up that would subsidize poor-managed apartments.
No, no, I understand. I think part of the problem is, at times, the owners are more concerned with cash flow as opposed to the quality of their units. And they'll just take any kind of a person without any doing any background checks, such as previous crime, monitoring what's going on in that apartment complex. I'm just saying, I know money isn't always the solution, but as a council, maybe we could begin thinking in terms of what could we do to those problem areas to work to help eliminate some of those
Yeah.
Thank you. Chief, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff and all your officers for what I see a lot of the initiatives that you guys are doing is in terms of reaching out to the communities. I've been to some of those meetings that were held, community meetings over at Grant. And I got to say, that first one I walked into, I was shocked at how full that area was. I mean, it was almost standing room only in there. And I think the second one was just as successful. So I applaud you for that. I've been to some of the police cadet programs. I think that's a wonderful initiative for some of our inner-city youth. And I'm part of the PAL program myself. So I commend you and the officers for that. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Mayor, if I could just also make a quick comment. A lot of us attended a forum yesterday that the chamber put on talking about the September 12th elections. And there was a representative, Michael Clayton, was there from Boeing, who's a senior vice president. And he was asked a question about how important these initiatives are for business and business decisions. And one of the specific initiatives that he picked out that we do in this community that I'm so proud of is the REMERGE program. And Chief's been involved in that from the very beginning. For those that don't know, it's a women and children diversionary program to keep families united and help women that have received charges get on their feet. And if they complete a very rigorous 16-to-18-month, two-year program, at the end of that, their charges are dropped. And it's been hugely successful. I think we've had six graduations, Chief, maybe?
Yeah, it is. It's a very successful program. It's really, it's really what our system should be all about. And...
But for a corporate citizen like Boeing to identify that is one of the reasons that they chose to relocate to this community and to support the things happening here, I thought was very significant. And so thank you for your participation. I hope we can do a lot more of that.
Thank you.
Speaking of the September 12th vote, one of the primary components is a police initiative. And so could you explain to the public where you're at employment-wise and where you need to be or want to be to make this a safer city?
Well, I mean, we're really basing ours on a staffing study that has been presented to council several times, one back in 2010, and updated the numbers in 2012, which weren't really significantly different. But... But, but the, right now, we're over, a little over 1,100 officers. And that's the most officers we've, we've, we've had since I've been chief. Now, could, should, could those numbers need to be greater? Yes, they do in the staffing study really. And I stick to that, that the staffing study shows the numbers that we need. And, you know, this, this, this sales tax, this sale, this quarter's sales tax permanent would add 129 officers. Now, if you, if you look, if you look at it, then we're, you know, the number based on the staffing study should be at over, over about 1,300. So that 129 makes a very, very large dent in that, in that number for the future. Thank you.
But under an ideal scenario, you'd want even more or need more?
We have, yeah, this city really, you know, there's never, a chief will always tell you he never has enough, but I'm not, I'm not going to tell you that. We have a large city and, and third, you know, I mean, most cities, if you compare us, you know, that we, they're running, they're running our size really a little, over 1,300. But with our population and everything, I think this city would, we need probably over 1,300 total at some point.
Thanks for the report.
Thanks.
Next up is Aubrey Hamontry to talk about the same priority in Planning Department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I'm happy to report on this. This is a new council priority and I'm going to be speaking to the social initiatives portion of the council priority. Let's see if I can work the remote. There we go. So your statement that you've adopted through this priority, I want to focus on the portion that says, "We will ensure equitable justice through increased engagement with residents and community groups. We will support our partners and promote access to social services that facilitate a better future for those in need." The two measures that we've identified that we will start tracking are the number of homeless persons identified in the point-in-time count each year and the number of federally assisted affordable rental housing units. The first priority, or the first measure of this priority is the number of homeless persons identified during the point-in-time count. And this is the report that we've just been able to complete from the point-in-time count of 2017. And you'll have copies in the back that we gave to council support for you to look at afterwards. This is an annual process that we go through every year. It's actually required to be done every other year for all of the different agencies that receive HUD homeless assistance funding, but we do it annually. The Planning Department plans and organizes this event and the work is done with about 30 different partners and agencies and multiple volunteers. This is a snapshot in time. It is a one-day count of those that are in emergency shelters, transitional housing, day shelters, at meal sites, and on the street. This survey provides information on demographics, health, and the situation of those that are homeless. It helps us define the most vulnerable people and prioritize them for housing. It gives us and our partner agencies information on planning for assistance of those programs. Here's a table that shows our point-in-time count over the last five years. You might notice there's a fluctuation in the total number of people that we're able to count each year. That's a result of many factors, including weather conditions on the day of the count, the different counting methods, and different methods that we're able to house people and keep them housed throughout the years. So in 2017, the count had decreased slightly from the, of 2016, about, by about 143 people. And 20% of those were found sleeping outside or in a place that was not fit for human habitation. So we do like to break the numbers down. And one of the things that the point-in-time count helps us identify and reach out to is those who are chronically homeless. Chronically homeless are people that have a disabling condition, have been continually, continuously homeless for a year. And there are other criteria too, that they might be homeless on different occasions over the last several years, but totaling a combined length of time of a year. So you'll see that there's a gen- a general downward trend since 2013. This year, there were 254 individuals that were counted as chronically homeless. And that's a 12% decrease from 2016, but a 21% decrease from 2013. That's the year that we joined the 100,000 Homes Campaign, which was a precursor to our current program called Journey Home OKC. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. So in terms of real-world estimates, the point-in-time count is that snapshot in time. The estimate is typically four to five times the number of people that you can estimate are counted in that one night. So in Oklahoma City, more realistically, we have between 5,400 and 6,800 people who might be homeless. One thing this survey does not count is the people who are considered couch homeless. Couch homeless individuals are people who are homeless, but they temporarily stay with a friend or relative or acquaintance. And this is a really difficult number of people to be able to count. But nationally, it's estimated that those numbers are anticipated to be five to 10 times higher, those that are countable in our population. The number of couch homeless in Oklahoma City is really uncertain to us right now, but we do have a measure in that the Oklahoma City Public School District does a survey of students. Last year, there were 5,474 homeless children enrolled and approximately 80% of whom are couch homeless. So some of the ongoing challenges we face, to give you kind of a rounded perspective on this issue, is we're seeing some increases in family and youth homeless, but there's no increase in funding that's targeted to those specific populations. Another overreaching issue for us is that about 40% of people who become homeless or are homeless are struggling with mental illness or substance abuse issues. But as you know, we keep seeing some decreases in resources and funding that are focused on those services. Also, we're experiencing a lack of affordable housing in Oklahoma City and Section 8 vouchers are getting harder to obtain. But this is how we do help. Oklahoma City and our many partners that help us with these programs, about 30 different agencies, provide specific services and cooperate and coordinate care for homeless individuals and families. So we have multiple programs that we provide funding to for a total of about $4.6 million per year. And that's both in federal grant funds and some city appropriations. Except for one caveat is that the different federal programs can only be applied to very specific populations for specific uses. So I'm going to go through each of these quickly. The first one is the Continuum of Care Grant. This program provides permanent supportive housing with case management and support services to homeless people and families with disabilities. So the focus of this program is called the Housing First Approach, which provides housing first to individuals, then it wraps support services around them so that they can remain housed. Typically, that approach prioritizes those who've been on the street longest or at the most, are the most medically fragile. And these are the people who are the hardest to house and the most expensive to serve when they're left on the street or in a shelter. So over the past five years, HUD sometimes has bonus funds that are available and it's a competitive process to get additional funds. And we've applied for those funds every year. And four out of the past five years, we've received additional funds that we've been able to contribute to this program totaling about $1 million. And what we're proud of is that the number of permanently housed individuals just last year was 736 people. The next program is the Emergency Solutions Grants Program. This provides rapid rehousing services to, it's mostly for families, addressing family homelessness. And most families are not chronically homeless, but they're really more in need of prevention and emergency housing and, and the ability to get rehoused when something happens. So through this program, over 4,300 people were served just last year. We also have a very specific grant program for housing with persons with AIDS. And this provides specialized housing and services for people living with AIDS and for people who have family members living with AIDS. 248 people were served just last year. And then there's the city's social services grants. This is something that city council makes a specific allocation. This is a very flexible source of funding for our city because we're able to provide supplemental funds or matching funds to the agencies that we are currently partnering with for specific programs as needs arise throughout the year. And this is really the only source of funds that we allocate to providers of standalone employment services to help people get going. Some of our partner agencies have benefited from these. You might recognize their names, Urban League, Center for Economic, for Employment Opportunity and B to Change. And oftentimes, these providers that we partner with are small organizations. They provide an extremely important service and even a small dollar amount that we can give them to keep programs going is a big help.
We need more.
We need more.
Begging, we need more.
Theme of the day. But I do want to highlight this new collaborative initiative that I talked about before. The, the homelessness program in Oklahoma City has helped to develop the Journey Home OKC Collaborative. So this is a group of over 40 different government faith-based and nonprofit service providers. This is an example of when, when funds are limited or funds are very specific and targeted, where you can only do so much with what you have. By pooling resources and pulling together and getting creative, you can achieve a lot more. So the city can provide support through all of our different sources of funding, the continuum of care, emergency solutions, social services grants. We can leverage all of those different resources through this program. The goal is to prevent service gaps and avoid unnecessary duplications in service. And the emphasis of this campaign is to house our community's most medically vulnerable and chronically homeless individuals and veterans. And since January of 2015, you can see that we've housed almost 600 veterans and 355 chronically homeless people and a great retention rate of over 90%. The second progress indicator is about the number of federally assisted affordable rental housing units. So the source that we're tapping into for this is this National Housing Prevention or Preservation Database. And it's updated triannually in March, August, and December, so we have fairly new information. It combines a lot of different resources that receive federal assistance. So you can see on the left, the many different resources that receive federal assistance. And when you add all of the different units up that provide assistance, it's about 8,000 units in Oklahoma City. The caveat about this is that about half of those 8,000 units have subsidies that are now expiring in the next decade. So that means that they may or may not remain affordable. They may become market rate. And we are not replacing affordable units at the same rate to replace those units that we may lose. So I wanted to talk quickly about our demand for affordable housing in Oklahoma City. On the left is some stats. We have about 237 households in Oklahoma City and our median household income is about $50,000. About 40% of our entire population meets the category for 80% of the area median income. And that's considered a moderate income. Oklahoma City is also doing differently than other large cities in that we have about 63% of people who own their home and 37% who rent their home. In other cities, that, that ratio is different. So I wanted to quickly go across who can afford to rent homes and what the demand is. For every 100 renter homes that are available to people that are within the very low-income bracket, only 38 of those exist. And of the people who are in the low-income bracket at 50% of area median income, only 63 are available to them. But if people that are in that moderate income bracket, we have more than enough housing to supply that demand. So 107 for every 100 homes that are available. Another note about this is that we estimate over 70% of the rental housing units of low and moderate income might be considered substandard conditions. So we have a lot of work to do in terms of providing new housing and also making sure that we can rehab existing units to bring them up to standards. So quality and quantity are both factors.
So can we remind the listeners today that as part of the bond issue that's up for a vote on September 12th is an affordable housing component that's in the economic development piece?
Correct.
$10 million of that is set aside for affordable housing and so roughly allocated at $1 million a year.
Yes, ma'am, that would help.
That would really help.
And we do have some other programs. Through our Community Development Block Grant and home programs, the city supports affordable housing, supports rental and homeowner affordable housing. So we're able to provide funds to do rental housing. You might recognize some of these projects like the Steel Yards in Breaktown and the Meadowcliff Apartments. The owner-occupied affordable housing program that we have also helps build new housing and renovate and rehab existing affordable housing. And we work with different nonprofit agencies like community, our community housing development organizations or our CHODOS. And overall, we put about 200 to 300 affordable housing units in the market, either rehabbed or new each year. And then I just wanted to make note that this is not just our issue about the lack of resources, it's a federal issue in that our funding is reducing for housing and social services everywhere. Oklahoma City's allocations last year fortunately remained steady. But there are still proposals active at the federal level to eliminate CDBG and to cut HUD, HUD resources by $6 billion in 2018. Nationwide, the need that is estimated to provide repairs to public housing reaches about $30 billion, but the current funding proposal is about $1.85 billion. In addition, proposed Section 8 program, funding levels may eliminate vouchers for up to 140,000 families. And that's because there's a surge in rental housing demand and a scarcity of available units, which pushes the rent price up and makes fewer vouchers available. So this is a nationwide issue and cities are trying to bridge the gap and do as much as they can to support that. One of the things that we are working on is we're seeing a lot more people having this conversation in our community. We had a speaker at the Mayor's Development Roundtable talking about affordable housing this year. And we're working with multiple agencies to put forth a new affordable housing strategy for Oklahoma City. And then, as Councilman Sawyer mentioned, the 2017 General Obligation Bond does have an economic and community development proposition. And within that $10 million is going to be used for affordable housing to support that. And then just in closing, I'd like to say that I think that this Journey Home OKC program is a good example about how Oklahoma City pulls together. We try to partner with as many people as we can who each do a part of something that can become a greater whole. And so that's where we're headed with our programs. I wanted to give you a more thorough overview of this issue since this is a new council priority and will continue to track it and report our progress back to you. If you have any questions, I wanted to also mention Chris Varga, who's our Division Head for Housing and Community Development, is here. Also Jared Shatted and Stacy Tarpley, who run the homelessness program for the city.
All right, thanks Aubrey. Anything else under City Manager?
We've got one more presentation. Doug Cupper's going to come and talk to us about recreation, wellness.
Good morning again, Mayor and City Council. Doug Cupper, Director of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Services. And this is one of your newer priorities that, that we're thankful that, that you also realize how important the health and wellness of our citizens towards their quality of life is going forward. Some of the priority, obviously, this is our, our, the, the main definition of this priority from you all, and we are striving to make that a reality. The, the indicators are percentage of citizens report regular leisure time physical activity, percent of citizens within a half mile of a trail or recreation facility or a park, percentage of citizens satisfied with maintenance of city parks. Obviously, this is very important because if, if they're not properly maintained, people aren't going to want to use the parks. And then a percentage of the citizens that report using an Oklahoma City park are attending a park program more than 10 times a year. The, the citizens that were surveyed this particular year showed that only 41.4% of the population is, is actually participating in, in some kind of leisure time activity. As we go through our slides, in fact, might as well go to the next slide. I'm not sure that we might have hit the right citizens or, or something along those lines. If you look at our athletics, we went up nearly 5,000 participants in our, in our athletics program alone this, this past year. So, and we're on target to, to hit 13,000 of our youth, at least, majority of this is youth. But, but that's quite an increase to have a 41% that says that they, they participated in programs. Our aquatics was down this year because our, our Family Aquatic Center at Will Rogers, unfortunately, first two weeks of our swim season was closed due to pump issues and things along those lines. But again, overall, our early wine center came back this year. They, they were able to compete with the Moore facility that opened last year and killed us going forward. Our recreation centers are booming. We've got a lot more activities there as well. This seniors number does not reflect the opening of the Rockwell facility. These numbers obviously will, will jump up for the next time that we have the, the survey done. But again, these, we, we still have as many as 30,000 people participating in Will Rogers and Woodson. These are pay-as-you-go programs, participants, these numbers. So we are generating some revenues, but we are still a social event. People are still coming to meet their friends and hang out. They're just not participating in the fee-based programs. And that's what those numbers are based on that you see there. Some of the new wellness programs that we have, one of our most. Some of the new wellness programs that we have, one of our most successful in the downtown areas, yoga at Bicentennial Park. It's been very successful. A lot of city employees have been participating in that. But again, we've got other partners that are providing programs. The Belle Isle Neighborhood has contracted with a neighbor to teach basketball elements at our facility at Belle Isle Park. It's just one of the many opportunities that the neighborhoods are even participating in programs going forward to bring new health and wellness activities. Some of our partner groups, these are the traditional ones that you see up here, Boys and Girls Club. Fields and Futures is investing in our parks to help provide additional soccer facilities. The After School Network, the public schools, police athletic leagues. But again, the Healthy Living's facilities out there on Rockwell, and we're real excited about the upcoming opening of the campus, the Capitol Hill Maps Facility to add to our partner groups. One of the new ones in here that I'll talk about a little bit further later on is the National Fitness Campaign, and that's an exciting opportunity, I think, for all of Oklahoma City going forward. Citizens within a half mile of our recreational facilities, we're still at 65.3%, which I think is a pretty quality number. And again, not to take the wind out of Councilmember McAtee's sails or any of the rest of you, but hopefully on September 12th, we'll be able to celebrate some opportunities to expand out into those areas of the city that we're not serving. One of the areas that we will be remapping, again, will be around the Rockwell Maps Facility. Having that facility out there is in a zone that we do not currently have too many recreational facilities within a half mile, but we're excited about being able to expand that number to higher than 65.3%. 26.2% of our citizens reported that they used a park 10 times a year. Again, if you look at our athletic numbers and our aquatic numbers, I don't know who we were reaching with this particular survey, but -- and again, I can't challenge the scientific significance of these surveys, but I think the reality is, is we are getting a lot more participation. Maybe it's not as high as 10 times, and that's something we have to work on, but I'm not too upset about this number. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think you will see new numbers going forward. Citizens satisfied with the maintenance of the city. We slipped a little bit this year, but again, 66.5% of our citizens like the way we take care of our parks. I do want to point out, I don't know how many of you on council have ever seen the Bricktown Canal empty. There you have it. So the crews were in there squeezing the mud and stuff out of there. Ironically, the most things we found in there this year were skateboards. So I guess they were skateboarding the edges and miscalculated, and they sank. This, again, in 2014, when I stood before you and told you that you were the largest healthcare provider in the city of Oklahoma City, let alone Oklahoma County and Canadian County and Cleveland County, this came out of our national publication this year. It's proven a point that all parks and recreation departments are starting to realize how important health and wellness is to the quality of life, something that you all can be proud of because you've been investing in that for over 20 years. And again, I think on September 12th, we hope to see that investment continue forward. Park maintenance and improvements, we had 158 projects planned out of the 2007 General Obligation Bond. Since 2015, 91% of our funds have been expended or encumbered. 80% of our funds for those bonds that you authorized the sale of for park purposes in 2016, already 80% of those have been expended or encumbered. So we've got a lot of great projects that are coming to fruition. One of them is the expansion of soccer opportunities at South Lake Soccer Complex. Obviously, Military Park was another one of those. Mowing, this is a reality. We're now mowing 5,500 acres with the advent of the Water Trust Real Estate that we added, that the Water Trust is paying us to maintain now going forward. Again, our frequency for the third season in a row, we are doing most of our neighborhood parks, if not all of them, every two weeks, weather permitting. So we've come down from the three to four weeks, and when I got here in '14, we're doing them every two weeks, and I think that has shown a drastic improvement to the neighborhoods. We aren't getting as many calls these days on Dallas grass problems as we did in '14. One of the real big projects that we're real excited about, this is 100% handicap-accessible baseball diamond out at Route 66. The green is not grass. That is rubberized safety surfacing. The running paths are rubberized safety surfacing, so we will be able to teach kids in wheelchairs or on crutches how to play the American pastime of baseball out at Route 66. So we're excited about going under construction later this fall for that facility. It's going to be a great addition to our inventory of facilities out at Route 66. Again, Military Park came online this year. Awesome public-private partnership. Again, going back to the economic impact of arts that you heard earlier, the Vietnamese community contributed a very nice art feature in that park to the tune of almost $250,000 to add to the quality of our facilities going forward in that neighborhood in the Asian District. And again, the Health and Wellness Center at Rockwell, I've talked about that quite a bit today, but again, an awesome operation, a great investment that you all put into it. The Will Rogers Trail, which used to be called the I-44 Trail, is far under construction, and we're looking forward to that. This will bring more opportunities to more neighborhoods stretching from Hefner to the river to be able to get out and get exercise, again, contributing to their well-being and their quality of life. This is an exciting opportunity to close some loops that we have across the city. This photograph is one of those things that we hope to bring to our city. Obviously, the Golden Gate Bridge and the mountains in the background tell you where this particular element is in San Francisco, but this is a fitness court. The National Fitness Campaign started in the '70s. They're bringing back a resurrection. This is a one-stop-shopping, family-oriented type of facility where we can provide a gym-like workout for free in the neighborhoods. Again, rubberized safety surfacing. The physically challenged can work out here. You use your own body weight as the weight elements in this workout, and we're looking at placing at least four of these through the 2007 GEO Bond Program across our city. And I think this will be a great opportunity. The national campaign is looking possibly at selecting the city of Oklahoma City as their number-one city for their 100-city campaign. So we're excited about them. They've been here and visited our facility. They like what they see, and they are this close to designating Oklahoma City as their number-one city for their 100-city campaign that will kick off in '18. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions for Doug?
There was a -- last year, there was a RAN study that looked at 175 cities and looked at usage of city parks, and they identified two groups that are underrepresented. One is elderly, representing only like 4% of users of city parks, and the other was girls, especially teenage girls. And I think you had some of that data in there, but they said the number-one thing for seniors was walking loops. It seems like we have maybe more walking loops than other cities, but going forward with park projects, is that -- how many parks would you say have walking loops, and is that on the radar to try and incorporate those into?
Boy, that'd be a tough question. 160 parks, I think, where probably a minimum of 40 facilities have walking paths in them or they are adjacent to the major trail systems. But you have 20 projects underway right now, and the majority of those 20 2007 GEO Bond projects have walking trail elements in them right now.
Great.
They're under construction. It is the number-one requested item through all surveys, going back to the early 2000s. It was the number-one thing that citizens have asked for, no matter what age they are. So we're adding them as fast as we can, and again, thanks to the 2007 GEO Bond, we are being able to add probably close to 20 of them right now.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
That's it. All right, citizens to be heard. Michael Washington, plus everyone that comes up to keep their comments to three minutes or less.
Thank you for this opportunity. Three minutes is not long, but I'll try to block it in. First of all, I want to thank the illustrious people before this well-esteem, well-gathered I like this idea that Chief Bill City came up with regarding an oligatory agreement with the City of Edmond, City of Midwest City, and Oklahoma City County, creating the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. Now, it's only one thing I find with this committee, they didn't ask me to be a part of it, and I quite wonder why. Being a -- look at me, I understand that, you know? But really, seriously speaking, how can you have a community development project like this and exclude one of the primary persons, political activists, and social reformers here in Oklahoma County? It's no question, I think everybody knows how passionate I am about anybody's right for civil redress, civil acceptance, social awareness, so forth and so on. Now, even though I'm not invited to a lot of them, you better believe I make my presence felt because I like being a part of something that I'm not asked to be a part of. Now, having said that, I do have a problem with, due to my time constraint here, with the contract that I've been looking at now for a year or two, that the city has with county jail officials, and as Chief City just admitted before he left, that they're over the capacity as far as incarcerating people who they bring in arrest. And in view of that fact, it seems to me that the city needs to get back to the basics and open their own city-state jails, city jails, all state whatever, what you want to name it, in that we can relieve some of the overcrowding. And this is why we've had so many people who have lost their lives in an over-stuffed county jail that's fit for 2,000, as he stated, is beyond their capacity. So in that regard, I think we need to look at that as far as the capacity and the authority that you people have up here, that we need to try and do something with that contract. And he saves $600,000? I mean, why would you want to save some money like that when we see there's a big problem that's going on in the county jail with the contract you have with the city has with the county jail? Now, it seems like to me, I'm trying to figure out myself, I'm trying to do my studies here, why is it that we have to take the people from the city and overstack them in a county jail just to have a contract with them? Well, you're going to have depleted funds for food, clothing, housing, and various other amenities that goes along with that. So in that take, then I think, again, I would like for y'all to consider, and I'll be back probably submit a proposal probably in a week or two, in that we disregard this contract with the county jail, in that the city do its duty instead of contracting someone, I like the prison system does. I mean, if you come back and say, "Let's have our own city jail," it seems like to me that it would be less killings, there'd be less people, excuse me, less people for food, they're needing food, there'd be less medical problems and people getting the proper Medicare. And in that regard, I'd like to get rid of the clothes. Just by saying one last thing. Mr. Greenwell, you did outstanding with that suggestion of allowing TIF to be earmarked or redirected toward the inner-city's apartment complexes that's very well-needed. Now, a lot of our people today don't have the finances that are necessary to deal with the problems of drug addiction. I'm going to tell you the truth, that's no need in hiding. How can we heal a wound if we don't tell you what the real source of it is? Yes, we have a lot of gangbangers in our communities. We have a lot of people doing drugs in these apartment buildings. We have a lot of people that's drunks hanging around doing that in these apartment buildings, and yet if they had some other viable social programs earmarked and to divert their attention from these things and let inner-city leaders come in and have an actual, maybe a gathering where they can sit these people down and talk to them, families and things, things would be much better. So yes, so you did a great job, but we might need to take a situation and look at that TIF thing. And in that regard, thank y'all very much, and I'll be back.
Right, we have executive session.